There are no contingencies on anything. They are not in a position to demand anything with council or the village or anybody.
Right.
You know, that's it. We've tried numerous times to be diplomatic and work with them. And I think that, you know, they haven't gotten us too far. So, I made the position of council very clear to Attorney Zuzel. And I think he understood it and I think he appreciated, you know, where we were coming from. I know from having represented people in the house, you can advise them on certain things and what they should do. And what they actually do is not always the same. So, that showed me a lot. Because that was two weeks ago. The day after our meeting, I called and I said, you have two weeks to, you know, give them, show their faith. That's as part of the document.
Okay, thank you. Those posts I took a look at, are they in concrete? Are they in foundations?
To my knowledge.
Really?
They are pier foundation. In other words, holes were dug into the ground, cement was poured. And if I'm not mistaken, I do not think that the wood is in the cement. I think it's actually bolted to the cement. I believe so. I could be wrong, but that's what I think it is.
But just the cement, I think, is my action.
I would be, I would consider.
That's a violation.
Okay, you don't have a court date for the garnish.
No, the charge has not yet been filed. It should be filed by the end of this week. So, that's where, like I said, that's where we're going with that. And we're going down that path with 24th Monday.
Okay.
I can just throw this out there. We do have a couple abandoned cars that I'm working on. I'm trying to get movement from people outside of court. Because obviously, as you're seeing, court takes a long, long time to happen. So, I'm working on some things outside of the legal realm.
I have an answer to the question about the ordinances. You were right about the two. It's two publications. So, two publications within the village have to be advertised. Thirty days after the advertisement, or thirty days after the effect, then it's passed, then it becomes effective. So, it'll go into effect May?
May 1st.
May 1st. Okay, so two newspapers.
But it still has to be published, Chris.
Yes, yes.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, it's Ruben.
That's okay. Two newspapers, thirty days after.
Two newspapers or two publications?
Two publications, I'm sorry. Well, actually, there's too much newspapers, but.
We should probably get Russ and use him, who knows? We've never done that.
We've always published.
Only the indicator.
It says, "If only one newspaper of general circulation, the publication be in such papers." So, I guess we're okay with just the indicator. But it'll go into effect thirty days after passage.
Thirty days.
May 1st.
One K2, one.
Sorry.
Change the line.
Here you go.
I don't think so.
Yeah, correct here, just. This ordinance shall be in effect, but of course immediately upon passage.
Forty.
For emergencies, yeah? For emergencies?
We're gonna have to push the effective date back to thirty days.
Your case is going just like me.
That's what I'm questioning. I mean, they normally go in effect immediately.
Just the regular three days.
Three readings.
There's a special high emergency versus two readings in that passage you just read?
No.
It doesn't say passage or no.
It talks about emergency. Exceptions. Ordinances for the appropriation for expenses, no extreme improvements petition, no. Any emergency ordinance or other measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety. This ordinance or other measure would require two-thirds vote of all members of council. And the reasons for such an assessee shall be set forth in one section of the ordinance or any measure.
So, we have that part, but then it goes back to how, when does it go into effect?
Well, the thirty-day requirement, there's an exception to that if you meet those criteria, if you think it does. So, I.
So, it's effective immediately.
Yeah.
And that's standard language.
Right, because ordinance one and two, we have it, shall be in full force and effective immediately upon passage. But then number, the third one, I'm gonna do about parking violations. It says, "It'll be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law." And this is where we get into issuing tickets.
Which is?
If you're passing an emergency, yeah.
Yeah, if you're passing it as an emergency.
Their word is, they need to say.
I think you're okay if two-thirds of the council vote for it, which I'm anticipating they will. And I think it qualifies because it is for the, you can say it's for the safety of the community. So, I think it's okay.
Okay.
I think there's an exception to the thirty-day rule there.
Section three of that clause, as you mentioned, it's on all three of them.
Okay, good.
Yeah, no reply. We're good.
Okay, well, good.
All three, all three. But we're still gonna publish them.
Most, we have to publish anything. Most ordinances require a time period, you know, the three readings. But when it's an emergency, you don't. For a regular ordinance, it would require publication and a thirty-day wait period from the day of passage, unless it's an emergency, which this one hasn't categorized yet. Since it's an emergency, there is an exception to the thirty-day period before it goes into effect, which you qualify for. So, to sum up the long drawn-out answer, if it goes into effect tomorrow.
All three.
All three.
Okay, good. Thanks, Anthony.
How much of a vote, Anthony, two-thirds?
Two-thirds, yeah, provided two-thirds.
Being that Joe is acting mayor tonight, does he get to vote on this?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he's still the council.
Yeah, but even though he's presiding mayor, he still gets to vote.
He's the council person.
Yeah, he only acts in the capacity as the mayor to conduct the unit to, but he still has his vote.
Okay.
Okay, I can tell you about the gas line and the sanitary line in the woods. We got a few minutes. Okay, they're putting a new sanitary line, 24-inch. And that's supposed to pick up all the sludge from Borden. It's coming under 680. There was one there now, but it exploded, remember? We got garbage and the creek and all that kind of stuff. Okay, but there's a problem. Because that line is going from the sanitary line, 24 inches, and it goes east to west, you know, coming like parallel to 224. Then, there's a high-pressure gas line going from north to south. And Columbia Gas can't tell us how deep it is. So, that's a high-pressure line. Remember, a couple years ago, they were gonna replace, there's two lines in there, they were gonna abandon one and put another one in. So, right now, they're getting bids, Columbia Gases, to find out, who's gonna find out, because they don't know. Can you believe that? The gas company don't know how deep the line is. It's a high-pressure line. So, there's a holdup right now until they get a couple bids to find out, excavate and find out where this gas line is, because they're going like that. So, that's one thing. And the other thing is, we're looking at funding to upgrade the signal, upgrade the traffic signals, you know, the streetlights, I mean, traffic, streetlights, yeah. And we're depending on Eastgate to get us information for that. And that could be an 80/20 type of a deal. But I think that'd be probably into next year. Those are the only two things that are happening right now with Moses and Soracus. But we don't want an issue with somebody hitting that gas line.
Is that what they're doing in construction?
No, in the woods, this is in the woods. It comes under 680, parallel to 224. And there's a big concrete box up there that a couple sanitary lines connect into. And that's the first phase. So, and that's funded by the county, you know.
On that traffic light, Joe, 820, what's the total amount for starting that?
I don't know. Eastgate's gotta find out.
Because the one traffic light cost us $200,000. We didn't pay it, but it was $200,000.
Yeah, for the one at the post office.
The one at the post office.
Yeah.
Three-quarters of that was for studying it.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah. We were fortunate to, yeah. Okay, I don't have anything else like that. Things are kinda quiet.
There it is.
Yeah.
I got one thing. Dave, is Streetscape still interested in getting rid of their crushed brick?
Crushed brick in Peterson Park is.
Yeah.
Some of it.
They're gonna be replacing that crushed brick that's up there and with pavers. And Streetscape was, wanted to know if the village would be interested in taking that and using it anywhere. So, people on the blooper committee, if you could maybe give that some thought, think of anywhere around where we could use that, we'd probably help them too, if we could take that out of there. I looked around, I really couldn't think of any place to put it.
Anything like at Fireman's Field?
How fine is it?
It's not, it's choppy. It's not really crushed brick.
You could put it in the duckhouse up there.
In the duckhouse?
Because that's just a ground floor. If they need to get rid of it, I mean, that's a place it could go.
That's a thought.
Who's paying for the brick to go in there?
This is gonna be, I think, Polish Youngstown has been involved in that. They have a lot of visitors come who are handicapped and they can't get up on that crushed brick, so they're trying to put bricks in the whole area where the crushed brick is now. So, they're contributing, I think, the bulk of the money to do this. Selling bricks, I believe.
I think really what you're looking for is for us to go up there with tobacco and if you want it, if we want it.
Come and get it.
Otherwise, I think Larry Warren said there's a guy, I think he said from Sharon, that will come and take it away at no charge. But that is a good base.
It's not too deep.
No.
Couple links is deep.
Oh, we have no use for it.
Couple wheelbarrows. Well, we're getting close.
If nobody else has anything to add, everybody got a copy of this record retention schedule ordinance?
Yeah.
It's not on the agenda tonight. It's for you to look over. First reading will be at the next meeting. I think that it pretty much, I went very broad with this, so that if we find anything going through the mess in the attic, that we'll try to cover it in this one shot of an ordinance and not have to revise it continuously. There were some obvious things that had to be removed, like airports and water and sewer and things that we do not have, obviously, for the village. Once we pass this ordinance, and hopefully by that time, the records commission will meet, I know the council has to appoint a citizen who is interested in helping on this commission. And hopefully, it's somebody who's willing to give some hours to do so. Nick has already said that he'll volunteer to help on some weekends to go up there. But we have quite a big job upstairs in that attic before the board falls through. I mean, there are a lot of records up there. And there's a lot that can be thrown out. When you look through here, you're gonna be shocked at how much we could dispose of. So, we'll have to go through the procedure, which is following another section of code 149-381. We have to make lists of everything that we want to dispose of. Those lists have to go through Ohio Historical Society and also the State Auditor's Office. Once we get those clearances, then we can either have trucks come, pull in the lot and shred the things that we'll want to make sure that they're taken care of properly. And some things we can just actually throw away, like old audio tapes of meetings and things that really, you know, would serve no purpose to someone with ID theft or anything like that.
Chris, we did that with the fire department, right? But there was no big deal with that. I guess we didn't have that many.
When was that done?
A couple meetings ago, yeah. Fortunato filled the papers out and sent it to the state, yeah. Okay, I think it's time. A bunch of legends. A bunch of legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of members.
Is that?
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Attorney Limer.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mrs. Curnick.
Here.
Mrs. Yaz.
Here.
Sixth president, Mayor's asking.
Motion to excuse the mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance in the minutes of the previous council meetings. This one, there's only one, last one.
Pushing away the reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Notification of meetings and events to the public and the news.
Looper. It's scheduled for the next council meeting on the 15th at 6:30. Again, I won't be here, Linda, involved.
April 15th, huh?
None right now, Jeff.
None. Legislation, we gotta figure that, whoa, we just figured that out.
Yeah, it's gonna be April 15th, Wednesday, just before the council meeting at 6:00 PM to discuss bikes regulation ordinance.
Good. Frank really put a lot of time in this, didn't he?
He sure did.
Yeah.
He'll be there, so.
Yeah, yeah. Please, what do you think, Chris?
We had a meeting tonight, so next.
Okay.
The next meeting will be May, May 4th, first council meetings.
Okay, that'd be the 6th, I think, huh?
Do we have to change that meeting? Do we have a voting on election that Monday?
Election day.
Do we have election in May, primary?
Yes.
So, do we have to change our date then for council meeting?
That council meeting day. It'll automatically be changed to Wednesday by our ordinance.
Yep.
So, please, maybe.
Yeah, everything will be changed.
So, we're talking what? In May?
It would be May 7th would be our council meet.
May 7th.
Yeah.
May 7th, okay.
So, we will meet May 7th at 6:30.
Please.
Okay, then, okay.
Okay. Streets, we meet April 15th at 7 o'clock. Police, we have, streets, we have boards, ARB.
We have a meeting this Thursday, April 3rd, and we do have an agenda. 7:00 PM Village Hall.
Plenary.
Okay, that's the 16th. November 16th at 7:00. Dave, I won't be that late.
You all set on that, though? Is only in appeals?
Nothing scheduled.
Nothing? Okay. Western District Joint Fire Board.
Just a reminder that we have changed our meeting date for our April meeting, monthly meeting. We'll be holding it on Wednesday, April 23rd at 7:30 at the Poland Township Building.
Okay. Forest, April 22nd at 7:30.
Where at?
Here. Yep. And High Memorial, May 21st at 2:30. I have no report from the mayor.
Oh, Joe, there's a court report. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the monthly mayor's court report.
Okay. Say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? You have it. Okay, report from the fiscal officer.
Okay. Circulating around the little village, I have sent the 2014 appropriation ordinance to the county auditor, and he has since returned the do not exceed certificate, which you have attached here to my report. And a report.
Motion to accept. Next report.
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? You have it. Okay, what did?
I'm saying he can't handle motions right now. I'll make the motion. You're not sure you can make it.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Sony and Administrator Davey, you got something?
No report.
Next, report from the solicitor.
No, other than the ordinances.
As to him, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. No, no report.
Okay. Chief of police.
You can take that back.
Is he here?
Post approved the police report and the street report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? You have it. Okay, report from the street commissioner, same. Okay, okay, report from the engineer, I gave you that, there's. What do you got here?
The bills.
The bills, what? Okay, this, the tree commissioner's here. Have a report for us? They're cutting a lot of trees around here.
That I will report on, yeah. Making some progress along those lines. We met with Ohio Edison and a man from Asklund, a few workers from Asklund Trees, coordinating some of the work out on Corbland and South Main. It's a process. You know, they have a job to do and we want the trees to look a certain way. So, we've been working with them and trying to get the best of both worlds aesthetically and functionally. I'm not real pleased with the work they've left out here, so I'm gonna be in contact again for the third or fourth time, just to try to get a handle on that. And I don't think they're done across from the library. They left a tree, probably at the end of the day, it was halfway done, so. But I will be in contact with them in a minute more. This is the first that I saw them revise work. But we, we as a village need to get a plan, and I'll do that for our future plantings and maybe even a future ordinances on no planting under the wires, any tree that exceeds a certain height. Yeah, be working towards that.
We, yeah, that was a big deal around here, you know, get big trees so it looked like a canopy and all that stuff. Then we cut them all down.
It's great, but we have to go up 15 feet from the wire, I think, if we, again, the plan, we need a, we need a plan of attack and for the future, so.
Are you able to come over here during the day once in a while and put an eye on these guys?
Not really.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're.
This gentleman works at Milk Creek Park, he's a forester there, so he's a real asset for us, yeah.
But I can have some communications with the general foreman and maybe, they were supposed to shave the trees. My initial idea, I wanted to, I wanted them to remove all these trees.
Oh.
Because, because they have to top them. It's actually an ordinance that says we can't top the trees. So, my idea was to remove, and through our meeting and our session, we decided to stagger the removal so we can plant new trees in the meantime, until they, until they come back in five years for the next pruning cycle. So, in that time, we'll have a succession basically of different heights and maybe, maybe get the trees off the sidewalk a little bit. But for now, we're just, it's a necessary evil that they have, seems like all the rights are in their favor to do whatever they want, so we're, they're being very, very helpful, very, as much as they can, working with us. He's even offered to take a tree down in our yard here up in the sidewalk that's a hazard tree. So, he has offered to take that down for us at no charge, so.
And they just say that they don't have their regular hired companies that are coming in and just cutting down trees. They're using their own hourly people to try to do a better, more thorough job, understanding how important these trees are to us. So, it's not like they are just disregarding what we, what we want. It's kind of a rock and a hard place between what, what they can allow for their safety and what we want for our community. And they understand where we want to go, we can get there, but it's just gonna take a little bit of time, was my, I was at the meeting too.
I personally walked from, from school all the way up to Riverside with the utility forester, hand-selected every tree that I've deemed necessary just to come out, as opposed to topping, which looks horrible, it looks worse than having no tree at all, so. But open for suggestions and working with anyone that has any, so.
Jim, did they give any indication of those trees that we have concerns about the safety going up the hill there towards Riverside where they block the traffic light?
Yeah, before the bridge, they're gone. I, we put X's on those, they're not gone yet, but.
Those are on the list.
I told them, they have to go. The root structure is all bad, so there are a few different, yeah, safety opportunities in the trees.
Talking different trees?
Yeah, I think so.
Right before the bridge.
Okay, I'm talking about.
Across from the library.
No.
No.
Up further on the hill as you approach the light.
Oh, sure. Those are actually, we went through it, hand-selected. We're gonna try to keep a couple for the, you know, succession, try to balance it out here, but we're removing probably more than half of those and trimming. Unfortunately, I really, trust me, I hate to seem to go, they're nice trees, but they're actually touching the wires. I spoke with another cert about arborist, who's actually done work on those trees, and he said, because I talked to him, if we could hire him to prune them professionally, more so than he can do, capable of. He said he doesn't want to touch them. Last time, he worked on those trees, he got, actually got a jolt through the pole saw because they're into the wires. He said he's not interested. So, there we go, with either cut these trees in half like the power company wants to do or remove half and then replant smaller trees.
James, I have a question for you. Specifically talking about when that tree trimmer got a jolt. Did he get a jolt because the tree becomes electrified or was it an arc from the wire to his pole saw?
It's electrified through current. So, when his pole saw, when he was pruning branches and, you know, different variations of what you can get, I mean, he could have been, he could have been zapped.
Right. So, it's actually the electricity going through the moisture in the tree?
Yeah, just the current.
Wow.
But it was more, it's more of a tingle when that happens. But anyway, had it been more serious, a lot more than a tingle.
It was not an arc from the wire to the saw?
No, no.
Okay.
From the tree to, to his pole saw.
Mr. Warren's here for Streetscape, and they talked about educating the public on what type of trees we could put there, when we replace them, that won't cause this because Streetscape's got a lot of money for folks to plant these trees.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna have a battle.
And they spent a lot of money.
Yeah, they spent a lot of money, so we're trying to smooth over those waters a little bit and then plant trees that won't have the same problem in five years.
As you said, Larry Warren was here from Streetscape, and I think he has a good understanding of what the limitations are. And, um, I think there was a misunderstanding previously where there's a lot of people that thought that, uh, we should be able to prune around these, uh, the wires and, uh, that's just fiction. Electric company will, will not do that because it's unsafe and, um, they're just going to take down what they need to take down. And, and like you said, I think there was a good, um, cooperation where, um, they said that they would work with us and, um, taking down minimal amount of trees so that the community would have an opportunity to come in and, and develop a plan for replacements. I think that's what's important for council to understand, that down the road here in the, in the coming years, we're, if, if we determine that we should do so, we need to get involved with replacing these trees and along with Streetscape and the other organization. And there, there needs to be a comprehensive plan about that and we need to be involved.
I'm meeting here on Friday with Lola Lewis, she's our regional forester. And one of the topics is, are the trees in the village and, um, what we can plant and what, uh, start with her with a plan. Uh, so I might have answers, more answers the next time in.
Okay, this is Jim Renger, he's, he's our tree expert, yeah. Now, you were at a meeting the other day, right, with Larry Warren and, now Jim wasn't there, right?
Yeah, Jim was there.
Oh, oh, okay, good.
Yeah, it just kind of, kind of fell together where there was, uh, I think there was a shock. My word used, it was a shock going around to a lot of people about, uh, about all the trees that were going down. So, uh, the mayor put together a meeting with two, one of the solicitors and he asked me to attend.
Good.
It was a good discussion.
Okay, the, the wires are in the devil's spirit normally, right?
Yes.
Wires, they're right. Now, if you're going to plant trees, replace them, you're going to have to go on private property, right?
Or plant smaller, or plant smaller species of trees that won't, that won't grow, they'll grow to maximum 15 feet, 20 feet tops. That still might be too tall on some spots, but, um.
There's going to be a lot of empty areas. There's going to be a lot of empty areas and we're not going to be able to do anything with, uh, less property owners, take it on the, on their, uh, their own.
As we'll find though, when they remove some of the trees out in South Main, the trees behind it now are exposed and you can see them more. Not justifying taking out all the trees, but it does open up the area a little bit to see what else we have in there and to let those grow up into bigger trees, so. Yeah.
It's going to be.
No jokes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, but we're depending on you to, you know.
Absolutely, yes. Call them by any time, I just, I can only do what I can do though.
And if you see another lot that's heavily on the side of a utility company.
Oh, sure.
Taking these trees down, I mean, they went, when they built this individual property owner, nonetheless a public entity, where our job is to look for the safety of the community. So it's much deferred to the, to the, um, companies to do that, a lot of governments.
And the Ohio revised code actually basically gives them full ring unfortunately. So they are cooperating with us very, very well. They, they don't really have to listen to too much what you say, they can do whatever, but they are to try to appease and be neighborly, so.
Okay, Ohio Edison had, had somebody at the meeting, right?
Well, yeah, they had, uh, represented.
Yeah, they were represented. Okay, so they tell Nelson or whoever's doing the work, how to do it?
They were there too.
It goes, they won't listen to us though, right?
Well, they, they are.
They are. Very good.
Yes, now we're working with them and, and the ash trees. Uh, I said, take out all the ash trees after this work was done, I said, you know, ash trees are, they're going to die because of that bug coming through. And they came through, uh, I think even just yesterday, they came through and removed all the ash trees like I asked them to after the work was already done once. So they're working with us as much as they can. But I will, I will call them, I want to, I want to have this cleaned up a little bit more even still, so.
Okay, very good. Hey, do, do they tie the stumps?
No, not aware of.
There were some tree, there were two trees removed up at, uh, in front of the tree stand. The stumps are grounded.
Okay, I'll have to ask, but.
Let's make a deal.
That price, if they, if they would do that.
That, that the stumps were grounded, I was, I was surprised to see it, so.
Maybe just did it. I'll ask, yeah.
I think if you ask them on some of the higher disabilities on the streets, I bet they would do it.
Negotiate.
They're not going to do it a lot, but they'll do it.
Absolutely, yes, you got a question, you got a question as far as you can, I understand that.
Okay.
That's all I have to report on that, so hopefully.
Okay, good. Who was at this meeting, can you tell us?
Larry Warren. See, there were three people from, three people from Ohio Edison, there was one person from, what's the tree, Nelson Tree?
Asklund.
Tom from Asklund.
Okay.
Uh, I solicitor. Al, Albert from, I don't know if he was from Nelson or Asklund.
Yeah. Anthony was there, Rebecca Rogers came, we, uh, we wanted a couple citizens, that's why we asked Larry Warren and Rebecca to come, myself and the mayor.
Oh, very good. Okay. Okay, thanks, Jim.
I'm fine.
Keep up the good work.
Motion to accept the tree commissioner's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
Okay, I guess we got them all, right? Did we get them all?
Yeah.
Report from the board.
Board's finance committee.
Right here. Okay, finance committee in order.
Okay, so we discussed the first reading that'll be presented on this ordinance at the next meeting. Also, I am going to bring you an emergency ordinance to start the renewal of the 3.2 mil levy. So that, that will be a two-step process, the first one is going to reach the county auditor, we're going to ask for certification of how much tax money will be generated by the 3.2 renewal.
Is that what you have to do that?
It'll be on the next agenda, yeah. We'll do that one, emergency, so we get the ball rolling on that quickly and we'll do three readings on the actual, uh, tax ordinance. I'd like your input on this. Should I ask him also for a replacement?
The difference between a renewal and a replacement?
It'd be, it'd be good to know, I think. I think it'd be interesting to.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's do that. I'll take that one.
Okay, I, I don't know what the village is worth right now, but one mill is one one thousandth of a dollar.
One mill generates about 57,000 some odd dollars, right, no joke. It's dropped, of course, you know, what it used to be, but that's, that's about it.
One mill?
About 57,000. And the 3.2 is our largest source of revenue to this town. It's really what keeps us going. We've never raised it, it's been renew, renew, renew.
Fifty-seven. Well, we need that, we need that.
Well, we absolutely need it.
Motion to accept the 2014 report.
Second.
Two and a half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
Okay. Legislature, police and fire. Uh, we're all set, we're all set there. Street side wash and drainage, I gave you the, the information there. Buildings, land utilities, parks and recreation.
Nothing.
Report from boards, planning commission?
Nothing.
Board of zoning appeals?
Nothing.
Nothing. Uh, architecture review board?
Nothing at this time.
Forest board? I gave everybody a copy of the last minutes, you know, from the forest board. Heine Memorial, I gave everybody a copy of the last minutes for that too.
I have something, Joe, that I'd just like to, um, let you know. The conversation that we had at the last meeting about the Heine Fund, there was so much confusion. So I went and looked back in the permanent file and this paragraph actually explains some of what we discussed. It was from one of the attorneys that Manchester Bennett hires in Almond and it was in regards to a total different question. But in it he states, "To the village of Poland, Ohio, to be held by and trust and used exclusively for beautifying and maintaining the old cemetery, Anne Green, given to Poland by my great-grandfather, Turhan Kurtland Heine." So that property was in fact donated to the village. Um, there seemed to be some confusion over that.
Whether it's township or anything.
Yeah, so, so, so the property actually was given to the village and that part of the trust was set up so that it would be used to take care of those properties. Now, I have no idea and I'm sure there's a deed that exists somewhere, someplace on the exact piece of property that was donated at who knows what year that would have even been.
1804.
Oh, you should know David, no, they owe you to that, 1804?
That's when he got donated. I've never seen a deed though.
Never saw a deed.
I think there's a big plaque up there by that Presbyterian church, isn't there?
Well, it's a plaque in honor of Turhan Kurtland.
Yeah.
And it says he donated it in 1804, but, you know, it wouldn't be the deed, yeah.
And that eighth of the, of the estate or whatever that was given for the trust, it started out as $21,000. And it grew over time, you know, I was trying to think about halfway through my, my terms. I remember it being around 200 and some thousand. Then I do remember at some point, Joe, you probably do too, that it hit about 600,000 before the recession.
It's about half a million.
It's about half.
And, um, well, in December, it's four, it was 498.
Yeah.
So, you know, of course fluctuations on both that and interests that's come in because of all the things that affect stocks.
But, but let's be careful about renegotiating the, you know, like you were talking about before the, we started the council meeting, you know, taking 20,000, setting it aside, you're going to be on top of this, right? Right, Nick?
I'm going to watch.
Yeah.
What we spend.
Yeah. Well, we already spent about 28,000.
Right. But do you want to sit on anybody? That's what, that's what you guys have to say.
Yeah, we're just looking at.
You set the limit.
The excess, the excess, it's, is looking at the.
Right.
But the stock market is good now, but what if it goes south?
This would not go into stock market, stock, stock. And this would be, this, this new investment would go into something that's, that's easy to withdraw, that, you know, you don't have to sell stocks, this would be something, it's just going to be.
Liquid.
Very liquid.
So in the event that you need some money over at the Heine Fund?
Very liquid. Interest-bearing account. Yeah, yeah, very liquid. But better than what a checking account is.
Okay, good. Okay, Western Reserve, George Fire Board?
Nothing. Nothing, I said, no one there. I'm going to have to go back and get the planning permission, we, we met after, uh, after the council meeting, so. Uh, there was, there was a planning permission meeting and, uh, there was a replat request for the, the lot at the corner of Riverside Drive and 224. And it was, uh, to divide it into two distinct, two distinct lots. There were people here speaking for and against it, uh, but, uh, bottom line is, is there's really, uh, the replat had to be approved because it's within the rights of the owner to, to replat that lot.
Who was the owner?
The owner, I can't think of the person's name, but the, uh, the foreman does have a, an option on the property and they represented, uh, at that meeting. Their, uh, their plan right now is to put two separate duplexes on the two new lots rather than, uh, putting the twelveplex that had been proposed there before. So that's a, rather than doing a, a variance or a zone change, it's going to end up being a conditional use, which will probably have to go through the board of zoning appeals.
Oh, so it doesn't need the residential?
Not completely.
Not completely.
Oh, I thought it was supposed to have met the.
Yeah, um, if you don't mind.
No, okay.
Uh, what happens is R1 district is zoned for either single family, uh, but there is a conditional use. One of those conditional uses is a duplex that is in character, keeping in character with the surrounding neighborhood. To get a conditional use, you have to go to the board of zoning appeals. That's the way to get a conditional use, so it's allowed, but it has to be in.
You'd have to get a rubber stamp from the board of zoning appeals.
So we're tied in that, two duplexes.
Has it been approved on rubber stamp?
Two duplexes.
Four tenants.
Yeah, well, there are now two lots then. There, there's no longer one lot there, there are two lots now. So it would be a duplex on.
That's one deal. Now, the next step is the, is the getting the conditional use.
And there are no other townhouses near there, right? Like, like those, those are all single residences there, aren't they?
But our zoning, but our zoning allows.
Yeah, it has to drive.
Duplexes, but there's certain conditions out there.
As an example, uh, another conditional use is a school, another conditional use is a cemetery. So those are conditional uses. So to, to put one of those in, you have to go to the board of zoning appeals. Now, obviously the cemetery predates our village, but you get the idea. And the school predates our zoning code, but you get the idea. So you, they can be allowed there, but there's a process. I have not received a request for, um, um, the conditional use, yet.
Motion to accept the planning permission report. Somebody go second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
Okay, I think that covered the report for special committees. Communication for residents. Somebody out there want to say something?
Uh, and I mean this not as, they smit 320 North Main, not as a criticism, but just a suggestion of something that we've got to start to look at. And that would be our village website for the village of Poland. If you've looked at it lately, I'd say it's a pretty, pretty basic, very basic. If you look at other communities in the area, Canfield, Lowell, Strothers, much more information available. More transparent about what's going on at council and meetings. Canfield even put the minutes of the meeting right on the website. And the reason I started thinking about this, I was asked as a member of the Poland Historical Society to attend a meeting with Poland Township. They are doing a, a major renovation of their website and they asked the Poland Historical Society to be one of the part of that. So we, we are redoing the historical society department. We met the other day out of the township building with the web designer and he was talking about all the possibilities. He even said it's not that hard to keep updated, which I know is a problem with websites these days. Now, I know from being at past meetings, budget is an issue and you're probably going to get into some cost items, I guess. But I'm thinking, uh, keep your eyes and ears open for grants that might be used for this purpose. Look for maybe staff or volunteers in the community that have this kind of background that might be willing to help with it. But I think there's a lot more that could be done. Oh, talking about the history of Poland, what to see and do in Poland, just today I, I had an invitation, I was asked to, by a couple who are staying at the Inn at the Green, if I would meet them at the schoolhouse, they came here from Morris, Pennsylvania, they're celebrating the man's birthday. So they wanted to know more about Poland, so I met them out at the Little Red Schoolhouse and talked to them for about an hour. They were amazed with Poland and the Inn at the Green and South Main Street and everything. We've heard that comment before from people who stay at the Green, that they really love this community and just, I'm just thinking we need to make it better known and mightn't be good for businesses to bring people in. But just a thought was something down the road and, um, I'm not volunteering to do it because I don't have that expertise. I'd be glad to sit on a committee to help do it, but I got enough other things in the pile right now.
Do you know how much the township's paying?
No, I don't. They engaged a fellow, I have his card here and he's a university professor, but from what I saw, very knowledgeable. And I'm sure he would probably meet with a group of people to talk about what he could do before he starts charging, you know, even estimate. And I'm sure there are others out there that do the same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who put ours together?
Mayor.
Jim did, yeah.
Jim?
Yeah, we, we've talked about this a lot, quite a bit in the past, probably about eight or 10 years ago, we talked about it. The trouble is, the trouble is, is, uh, staff to maintain it. I know it's not a full-time job or, but it will still take hours per week, which is probably not in the. At first it would, at first it would, at the night it wouldn't be too much. Well, you still have to put the minutes on line and, um, you're, you're right, at first it would. The redesign would be the hard part, but go put the minutes on, it'll take three weeks. And that's if you stop and take the breaks. So, I mean, it can be done.
Okay, anybody else out there got any questions or information or? Okay, anybody else out there have got any questions or information or something? Nobody? You're not going to say nothing tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. It's good to see you here. Okay. Okay, new business? Any new business? Any old business? Motions, ordinances and resolutions? Chris?
Yes, I have three of them coming out of police. The first one is I'm going to make a motion. This is all by roll call too, Joe. Roll, they're going to not be a roll call.
Okay, after you read it, we'll take a roll call, then we'll pass.
Right. They don't like to make a motion, wait for three readings and pass by emergency. An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the Village of Poland, Ohio, amending section 290.03 effective April 2nd, 2014, to establish a schedule of fixed violations bureau fines and declare an emergency.
Second.
Was this waiving the three readings?
This is just the waiving.
This is just the waiving.
Mr. Cassett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Six, zero, motion carries.
Okay, Chris? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Mr. Cassett?
Oh, we're going to roll call here.
Mr. Donovan?
Okay.
Yes. Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yep.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Six, zero, legislation adopted.
Number two, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings and pass by emergency. An ordinance replacing, replacing section 404.07B of the Poland Village Traffic Code regarding impounding of vehicles, redemption and fees and declaring an emergency.
Roll call.
Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Cassett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Six, zero, motion carries.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Cassett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Six, zero, legislation adopted.
Okay. And the third is, I'd like to make a motion to, to waive the three readings and pass by emergency. An ordinance amending section 452.03B of the Poland Village Traffic Code regarding penalty for parking violations and declaring an emergency.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Cassett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Six, zero, motion carries.
Okay. And I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Cassett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Six, zero, legislation adopted.
Thank you.
I get that's all, right? Anything else?
The, the bike, we're going to wait on that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We're going to have a meeting.
We're going to book that.
Okay. Is that everything?
Yep.
Good evening. Oh, yeah. Chris, you are?
Make, make a motion that the bill's vacated.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Questions for emergency?
Okay. Questions for, Jay T, you got anything?
Oh, Mark Christie.
Okay. Anybody else got something out there?
Okay.
Mark?
263 days till winter.
Just a reminder, I won't be here the next time, so please.
Have fun.
Okay, you, you, Linda?
I'd just like to thank our new tree commissioner for all the work that he's doing. We really appreciate it.
I mean, this is, this is technic area. Remember, we had, we had application for a tree village at one time. People donated for those trees. So, but you're doing a good job.
Well, my comment is that we got an expert and so that's our reason to get him. That kind of takes the onus off the council. So anyway, otherwise, no comment.
I'm going to echo Linda and Mr. Limer. Wonderful job.
Thank you. Chris?
That's what I said.
Okay. That's it?
I don't want to do it there. Second.
Okay.
Not unanswered.
Can't do it. Too restrictive.
Actually, we already have it. We know that 800 tree plant in the village.